Big order. All right, the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is required. United States of America. And to the republic which stands by the nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no adjustments to the agenda. Public comment? One moment, please. The school board endorses the concept that community participation in the affairs of the schools essential to improve the quality of education for its students. To be eligible to address the board, an individual should reside within the school unit, be an employee of the school unit, or be invited by the school board or superintendent to speak. The board shall give due attention to comments and contributions from the audience, but shall not be expected to respond or take action immediately. Audience inquiries other than simple questions shall be referred to the superintendent who shall investigate or consider the matter and report to the citizen and to the board. If board action is indicated, the item may be included in the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Comments will be heard for no longer than three minutes per person. Only thing I ask is, public comment, please be respectful and be nice. Bob?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. I was looking at the agenda. And I've got a little bit of concern about the use of the Narcan in the school. I just don't know what kind of example or statement that's sending. Yes, we know, and the kids know and have been taught that it's wrong. But my concern is, like I said, they don't have a consequence. No, they should never be put in that situation, and I pray to God that it doesn't happen. But if there's no consequence, what's going to prevent somebody from trying something? That's just my my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to, Kelly?
Hi, I want to just thank you for your input, your thoughts on this because this is new for us tonight. Our presentation will be presented by our school nurse, but tonight it will be a lot of information. And I know that she and I have been talking about this for months because it was, it has been a new thought. And I noticed in the news just two weeks ago that actually Narcan is going to be available on our, on our store shelves. Beginning, I think they said September. It's just such a shift, such a wave of something that it, you know, like people like you and I are really having to get ourselves on board with the thinking and understanding about. So I just wanted to, I guess, validate your comment, knowing that that's kind of where I came from when Katie and I first started talking about this. And I've had three months or so of conversation with her in order to kind of get myself to the point of, let's just see what the information is. So thank you for your comment.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you need to run yourself or anything else?
Jesse Dumay, 10 Somerset Street, Millauke, Maine. I agree with Bob. On the night, I'm excited to listen to the presentation first, but I do have some concerns. This is something that is morally kind of, because you, you do want to say the right way, what same token is there potential for almost to feel like, and this is kind of an old school way of thinking, I know that, where you're almost endorsing it if you know that there's the antidote right there. So there's a conflict even within myself to know exactly, is there a right thing? I don't know. I don't know that answer. So I'm excited to, to hear that presentation. And thank you for the agenda. I was just going to ask for the agenda. That's all I have.
Sandra?
Hi, my question again regarding Narcan. Does this in any way hold the school liable? Say if a, if a child does overdose and the Narcan is available but doesn't get to the child in time, can the school be held liable at all?
That's a great question, yes.
Yeah.
That's a great question, Sandra. And we're, I've been working with MSMA because there's policies being generated, vetted through whatever law firms they use and then provided to us. And that has been some of the consideration is where we lie and the, the whole Samaritan Act and, and things like that are all part of the conversation. So I don't have a solid answer for you. My answer is that it's on other people's minds as well, and they're thinking about it and looking into it to provide systems like us with additional information.
Anybody else?
Well, just to weigh in on this a little bit. I understand where Jesse's coming from, and I understand where Bob is coming from. Out from that school, out from that generation. And I will tell you, the last year and a half, they have pulled me kicking and fighting into this world that we have to do something. We recently Millauke Fire Department, Millauke has gotten involved in this, and we, we actually have kits at fire station, people could come and get. Having seen this firsthand, but you know, I've been in the business for forty-eight years. I've seen a lot of this come and go, and, and this is something that, that I think we really need to look hard and, and long at. I've been doing a lot of looking through DOE, MSA, what their policies are, and listening to other people. And I think this is something that we really need to look into. You know, I think we need to vet it well as board, more than certain we will. But I just want you to all understand that this is not going to be something that we take lightly as important. Thank you.
Like, I, I same age as Tom, just about. And I I despise drugs. And I, and I, and I hate them. And I believe in consequences. But consequences show to death. I, I would hate to see anybody or any student, anybody in the community or anywhere die because they made a bad decision. I believe in redemption. I believe that I just, you know, the punishment of death doesn't, doesn't beat that crime. And if we can do something to prevent a death, and we can do it in a, in a safe manner, as much as I hate drugs, as much as I do believe in consequences, I it's maybe the way of the world right now. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? I have, we have a presentation for Sydney Campbell. This will be her last night with us, and she's not here tonight. But I wanted to make sure it got on Zoom and everybody knew that we were very happy to have Sydney on our board, and we have a card and a, and a small gift for her. So.
We'll get it to her.
I, I'm sure the policy will make sure that she gets it. So thank you, Sydney.
She's done a great job as our, this being our first year for having elected basically representatives from the junior and senior class. So she's a they set the bar high for us.
Yes. Definitely does.
And I'd like to thank Sydney. This, this having those positions back this year is an enormous undertaking on their part, but the benefit that it has given us as a ward to have such, such examples of our school system and of what the potential is there and bringing the things back that, that we don't know. I'm not in here every day. I don't know. You know, and even if I was, you know, I don't know what the kids are thinking, and, and they do. And I just want to say to Sydney that, thank you, and we really appreciate it. And this is a good move getting them back on board again.
We were, Tom and I were very fortunate. I think Donnie was there and Warren, I think, too. We went to the award ceremony down a region. And Cindy, Cindy won an award, and she represented our school, our community top-notch, and I was very proud to say that she was from Millauke. And very proud to say she was at Sterns. And she's done a great job representing the student body.
Anything else?
Honestly, I'm I just want to thank her for her service, really, is what it was. It's great to have the student's perspective on things. And in the past, it's changed my votes, how I voted. So I thank her, along with Grayson, who's done a great job. So I, I hope it continues on.
Well, I, I hope Grayson comes back next year as, as a senior rep. That's the way we were doing it, and I hope it continues that way.
Yeah, I'll say, thank you, Sydney. That's a great liaison. It's great to have someone in there for us. And he's a great job.
Thank you, Sydney. Okay. Approval of minutes, motion, please.
Motion to approve the minutes of the school board meeting, April tenth, and April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, bearing any errors or omissions. I'll second it. Go ahead, Tom.
I get it, it's Kevin, Alan.
Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five votes.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed here in the subset against each name contained in the school warrant. Warrant PR twenty-three dash twenty-two in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. PR twenty-three dash twenty-two dash two in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty cents. PR twenty-three dash twenty-two D in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. And PR twenty-three, twenty-two D dash two in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-six cents on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and PR twenty-three dash twenty-three in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. PR twenty-three dash twenty-three D in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and two cents on May eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Bob, have we changed anything in our accounting? Is, I don't remember the PR being there before. We changed?
Um, that's a great question.
No, I, I like it.
No, it just indicates it being payroll instead of accounts payable.
Okay.
But we haven't done that in the past, Campbell, correct?
No, that's fairly new.
Yeah, thank you. No, I, I like it. I just, I just want to clarify. So, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five votes. Payable warrant, Kevin, gee?
I move to direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed here in subset against each name contained in the school payable warrant. Now, by S A twenty-three dash twenty-three and the amount of three hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy-three cents, students' accounts. AP twenty-three dash eight thirty-eight and the amount of thirty-three thousand, four dollars and thirty-eight cents. AP twenty-three dash thirty-nine in the amount of eighty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty cents on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. And S A twenty-three, twenty dash twenty-four in the amount of nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety cents. And number S A twenty-three dash twenty-five is the amount of seven hundred and forty-six dollars, fifty cents student accounts, and AP twenty-three dash forty in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and twelve cents on May eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five votes. Watching the one executive session, Doc?
I move to adjourned executive session pursuant to one MRSA four oh five six in a appointment of officials, appointees, employees, including Rhonda Casey. Second.
Any discussion about going in? Okay. There will be a decision afterwards. We will are we putting people in the house or what are we doing?
Put them in, I'll put them in the waiting room, and Donnie will make the conference room mute, and just let me know when it's time to let them back in.
Okay.
Turn the recording off.
Yes, I'll turn the recording off. Thank you.
Okay, Aaron?
Mr. General?
Yes, sir. Got the motion?
Motion to approve the superintendent's nomination and authorization, authorize the superintendent to hire Ms. Rhonda Casey as business manager at nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-five cents for the remainder of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and sixty-three thousand for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, with benefits as negotiated.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, I just want to welcome Miss Casey, I want to thank Miss Casey for applying, and in the interviews, I, I was very, very impressed. I think that we've got a really top-notch person here to help us get back on track. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Paul.
And I want to thank you for accepting because we got this job done a lot sooner than I thought we were going to for the qualified individual. So thank you for coming to Little Millauke, Maine.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Take care, Doc.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. We'll see you next week. You'll be here next week. Dave travels.
You'll probably be here next week, too.
Okay.
Nice.
Need a motion for the board during executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to an executive session pursuant to one MRSA four oh five six D labor contracts.
Second. Kevin? Are we getting Kevin, Kevin? Any discussion about going into? Okay, all in favor? Get you out again.
It's usually not like this again.
Yeah.
You're going to stop recording, Kim?
Not recording. Thank you.
Thank you guys for waiting. Give the time back in.
Five twenty-five.
You go, say, camera?
Yeah.
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. Uh, have a motion, please.
Uh, motion to confirm the ratification of the three negotiated agreements in the millauke school.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five votes. If those are clear. Thank you.
Um, that we're here. Thank you.
I'm going to show to you.
All right. So I'm Katie Carr, the school nurse. Do I need to say the address? Um, so for those of you that know me, know that I'm a very conservative person, and I agree with everything that you said. Um, and this didn't even start until twenty twenty-one, when the Maine Department of Education, and I, I have that printed off for you in your packet, um, changed things to allow Narcan to be available in schools. And unfortunately, our world is changing, and I just feel that we need to change with it. So after Dr. Lane first started, I had brought it to her attention that, you know, it was something that I've been thinking about and at least wanted to discuss, and she was open to hearing more. So, um, the substance use among young adults summary in Maine was recently released by the Maine CDC and reported that in twenty twenty, nearly one in three young adult minors qualified as having a substance use disorder, ranking Maine the third in the nation. It's really time that we focus on prevention, negative health outcomes, and a comprehensive plan, and I believe that that includes Narcan. Mrs. Buzzell and I looked back at the Maine Intergated Youth Health surveys that our kids do. And unfortunately, in twenty twenty, there wasn't enough information for them to calculate a response, but in two thousand nineteen, seven point two percent of our high school students admitted to using prescription pain medication without a prescription, and the state average is six point six percent. So, and that was in two thousand nineteen. And so a couple of years later, I'm sure that number is higher. And they're using it for recreational use. So when we talk about Narcan, we're talking about opioid reversal, so oxycodone, oxycontin, vicodin, methadone, morphine. And unfortunately, so many drugs are laced or cut with other things that a lot of times kids don't even know what they're taking. If they're getting into prescriptions or buying something that they could unknowingly take something that they don't even mean to. So Narcan is used to reverse opioid overdoses. It counteracts the depression of the central nervous and respiratory systems, allowing an overdose victim to breathe normally. And Narcan is non-scheduled, it's non-addictive, it's not a prescription, and it's legal in Maine. It is distributed everywhere from the fire department to, I talked to Peter Jamison at the town office. It, they were handing it out at the Bangor State Fair. It's handed out at doctors' offices. It's just something that is widely available. Um, Narcan has absolutely no effect if opioids are not present. So if somebody was having a low blood sugar or a seizure, it is not going to hurt that person. There's no contraindication. So it's very safe. Nasal Narcan, which is what we're talking about, the nasal spray is pre-measured, and there's no room for error. All you do is squirt it into the nostril like a nasal saline spray, and it's a one dose. So there is no room for error. It's easy to administer. It's easy to train people to administer. In twenty twenty-one, so and I know this is pretty wordy, but this, from the state of Maine, this is the the act to permit Narcan possession, prescription administration, distribution in public and private schools. So this LV seven seven two passed in twenty twenty-one from the Maine Department of Education allows schools with proper documentation in place to stock and administer Narcan to train staff. So what we would have to have is a policy, which I basically just cut and pasted that from the Maine Department of Education, the policy. I did make a few changes to make it fit to our school. And then we would need a collaborative practice agreement, just like we have with EpiPens. So that would be in your packet as well. Dr. Dunston is our school provider, and I have had lengthy conversations with him about this, and he fully supports us having it. So we would need a collaborative practice agreement, just like with EpiPens for anaphylactic allergies, that non-licensed staff would be trained, just like they're trained to give EpiPens at the beginning of each school year. So as long as we have a policy and the collaborative practice agreement, and then a standing order, which I also put in there, signed by the provider, which we would do those three, three things every year that we could stock and give Narcan. And it wouldn't just be for students, it would be for staff, visitors, spectators at our games. And I honestly see that happening before a student use. In twenty twenty-two, so every year we do, as school nurses, we do an annual health report at the end of the year, and we report how many students we see, how many times we call nine one one, how many students have follow-up with their PCP or the ER, how many doses of epinephrine we give, how many doses of Narcan we give, and obviously our Narcan is zero because we've never had it. But in twenty twenty-two, for the entire state of Maine, forty districts stocked Narcan, and only one administration to a student was reported. And they don't track if it's given to an outside person, like a spectator. But I do, I did do some research on the list of schools, on the school districts. How many districts are in our state, like a hundred and sixteen, a hundred and twenty, something like that?
I would say more than that.
Okay, I was, I was thinking maybe around a hundred and twenty districts. So East Millauke does carry it. Medway does not, but Medway Middle is five through eight. So I'm proposing that we have it available at both schools, Granite Street and Sterns, and it would be kept. I think where the EpiPens are kept, we have an EpiPen box at both schools that's in, in the office. Um, we're not going to advertise it on Facebook, or I don't think we should, letting people know that we have it. So we're not encouraging people that are doing anything to come into our school. It's just, you know, obviously, we're talking about it tonight, but we're not going to put it out there or advertise it for people. Um, I really feel like it would be irresponsible to not even, to not consider it. We really, with the way that our world is changing, need to have conversation and consider it. Um, so Dr. Dunston supports it. I spent a lot of time talking to the new assistant fire chief, Jonathan Cody, he supports it. Peter Jamison at the town office, they support it. Um, I spoke to Katie Cullen, who is willing, she's a paramedic, and she's willing to put together a short training for staff at the beginning of each school year, just to have somebody that's given it multiple times, somebody that's not me, making staff feel comfortable. I'm very comfortable with EpiPens. I've given EpiPens lots of times. I've never given Narcan before. I just it'd be nice having somebody that, you know, is very familiar with it come in. We have some very clear pronouns that were provided by the Department of Education. I didn't include them in your packet. But it's just to look like signs of opioid overdose. They're very simple, pinpoint pupils, unconscious, shallow, slow breathing, pale skin, blue lips, snoring, or rasping breaths. Some quick one-sheet guides on how to give it. Very simple and easy to use. These were put out for the Um, very simple and easy to use, these were put out by the Maine Department of Education. And like I said, there's no contraindication, so if somebody thought that somebody was having an opioid overdose. And they gave Narcan, and obviously we called nine one one and they were having a low blood sugar reaction, there would be no. Harm done to that pe- that person. Um. I did find a really interesting read put out by the, um, university in Maine and it touched on. The question that somebody asked earlier from the public. Um. Is Nar- is Narcan legal and what is my liability? So it says both intranasal and intramuscular Narcan are legal in Maine. The Maine Naloxone Distribution Law provides access to life-saving naloxone to various authorized sources. And subsequently, any individual who has received naloxone and training from an authorized source, which this would be. Or has a prescription for it. And then it does go on to say. When LL LD seven seventy two, which is the law passed in twenty twenty one, allows by law. The administration of intranasal naloxone to student, staff, school visitors through collaborative practice agreements. Between the licensed physician, school health advisor, and public and private school nurses. So. And it does go on to talk about the Good Samaritan law too. So that's pretty much all I have. Um. There's so much information out there, I mean, I just spend hours researching and. And reading, but I just think that it is something that we need to discuss and we need to consider. Um. You know. Um, maybe you can answer this, if you, if you're out on a call and we call nine one one, it could be a few minutes before somebody comes.
Yeah, it could be two minutes.
Yeah. But that's two or three minutes that.
Yeah.
We could save somebody's life.
A couple of questions.
Yeah.
Okay. This is a nasal spray.
Yes.
Uh, the staff will be trained. At the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
To, to identify a student or a staff member that was having that problem. And trained on how to administer that nasal spray.
Yes.
If a mistake is made at that point, that nasal spray is not gonna hurt anybody.
No.
And it could help somebody.
Yes.
Okay.
And I was, sorry, I was gonna tell you, I do a sign off for both schools at the beginning of each year. All staff that gets trained on the EpiPen, so it would be the same thing.
Yeah, I remember getting.
Yeah, and a staff member would, would never give it if they weren't trained.
Okay, now, here's a kind of a doc, uh, Dr. Lane question. If we had a policy for NASA or for this in the school. Uh, and that kind of becomes school policy that we, we would, in the case of an emergency. How does that affect, and you mentioned, uh, sport and activities, like a football game. So I love coming to football, I know the ambulance is there most of the time. What would happen if we had a student have that? Problem, or an adult even, uh, at a football game. Is that gonna be available there? When, does it have to be available there? Because it's a school activity.
Right.
Are we putting ourselves up to? Okay, someone's gonna be at that football game with that.
It does clearly state in the law that it's kept in one specific spot. I did read that. Um, it's that it's kept in one, um, centrally located spot. So, I mean, I think we leave it in that spot.
So we, we'd have it at the high, at the high school? If they had a football game.
Yeah.
Well, Dr. Dunston is at the football game.
He is a lot of the time, but he's not there all the time.
I thought they had to have somebody on.
The ambulance is there, uh, most ninety-nine cent a dime, but they get called, I mean, they, if they have to take somebody to hospital. I'm just wondering if we would be responsible. And the high school's quite far away, if you've got somebody having that kind of a problem.
The same goes for, you know, epinephrine, we don't send epinephrine, we do for outdoor education. But unless a child has a known allergy that's on the team.
We wouldn't.
We send that epinephrine to. I mean.
Okay. And you guys know how I feel about drugs and how I feel about this, but like I say, I, I would hate to see a consequence. Where somebody died. You know, when I got a consequence when I was a young man, it was usually over my father's knee with a belt from my mother. And it was a consequence, but I didn't die. And I learned my lesson and I, I just. I would hate to, hate to. See anybody of a.
The other thing is it's provided through, let me see, I have it written down.
I'd see a sixteen-year-old kid make a mistake.
It's provided through the Maine Naloxone Distribution Initiative, that's how we would accept it. And I haven't talked to them, there's an application that you have to fill out once it's approved and once you have all the paperwork in place. I mean, so I could definitely talk to them to find out how many do they distribute. I mean, is it a situation where they distribute enough that it could be kept? In several locations, I don't know, but I could find out.
When we got our AEDs, we don't. We didn't think of taking them to the fields there, and you, and we have them in the building.
Well, we actually. Um, so we have three portable AEDs now and we're trying to get a fourth. Um, so they do go with the sports, they go with the coaches and on the buses now.
And I'm not saying whether we should or should not have that at the football field. What I'm, what my question was, would we have some liability where it's a school policy and it's a school function if it wasn't available?
Right, I think that's a valid question.
Cause you know, I, I mean, God forbid, any, any of our kids, uh, any of our neighbors, it, it could happen, God.
A parent of one of the kids, I mean.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the parents, and I. Yeah.
It doesn't charge the school with the response, it only charges the school with having it available.
Right.
And that's a proper training and politics in place around it.
But I mean, I, I would. Yeah, I would wanna know that we weren't, wouldn't be held responsible at a. Football games, I, 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 I mean, Friday night football, no, not pretty popular.
Right.
And, uh, got a lot of people there and you got a lot of teenagers there, and you've got obviously a lot of teenagers there, and. You know, you gotta, you gotta. A lot of, lot of things going on with kids, and.
We'll, we'll check that out, have a next good question.
So cost-wise. Have we got this?
It's free.
Free.
You're gonna be able to get this free.
It's free through this initiative.
And, and the training would be done.
It's are actually free too.
Right there.
For right now.
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
I'm, I'm mixed racial, we're under right now.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and you're gonna be able to get it through that.
Yes.
Okay, and the training you could do at teachers' meetings where there wouldn't be extra paid for teachers and things.
Yeah, we would think that we would do it during the first couple of. Days of school, like we do the epinephrine training.
Uh, the town actually has a. Relationship with Sabina Health, and, and that's what they do. That they do. So, yeah. Um. We're not gonna move on this tonight. Are we? We, we actually, we, we have a motion. Yeah, it's the next thing after the discussion.
I would like to know about liability and things before I vote it, I mean, and as you can tell, I'm not favored drugs, but I am favored protecting people.
Right.
But I wanna know. If there is any liability for that, and, and I think that's a reasonable question, and it's not because I don't agree with you, Kate, it's like.
Uh, this is the policy case that you're, you're recommending?
Yes. Yep, so I mean, if you all wanna take it.
I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to take.
Yeah. There are a couple of like spacing issues that. I've been trying to work out, like on the collaborative practice agreement, but I'll have it all.
Yeah.
Perfect, perfect, without to be signed or anything.
Right. No, I'm more interested in the, the actual wording.
Yeah.
Tom, do you have an idea of how many times Narcan has been used in our community?
Is it used once, it's the one it does?
No, but I'm just saying that how many.
Is it, is it common, like one time a month?
No.
Two times a month?
Okay, you said one, one student in all forty districts, I'm just wondering.
Doesn't, that wouldn't surprise me, uh. We are very fortunate, we, we. I think. Since we've had it available, maybe ten times with you.
You hear some people say that. You use it and they're just gonna use it on the same press over and over again.
And, and I'm telling you, like I said before. Let me, with, before. I had to be drug into this because I'm really dead against this, I didn't think this, you know. I look at it as a. Okay. We need to take the old man glasses off and look at this through a different light. That. Yes, there are people that. They hold Narcan, like I have parties, where they have it on the table and everybody does whatever they want, because they know it's there, it's stable, okay? But in saying that. What's one life worth? What's one? We don't know, we don't know what I teach it. You know. It could be anybody, it doesn't have to be a student, it could be a teacher, it could be a vendor working here.
And it could be totally unintentional by a student.
They didn't even know.
Yeah.
So I am very conservative and I have very strong, structural opinions about this whole issue that I've really had to put in my pocket. Um, because Narcan has already been created and Narcan has already been legalized and Narcan is already administered. Nationwide, and we're not gonna fix or solve that problem. If we think that it's enabling drug use or that we're giving it to the same person, we're not gonna fix that issue. So that's what I keep trying to just put away. Is that. It's already here and. You know, our personal feelings aside, we have to take it a step further.
Yeah. And we're, we're not, we're not going to be actually. Giving it, I mean, we're gonna use it. Yeah, the only time it's gonna be done here is if, in case that's needed. It's not gonna be that, that they can get it here.
And I really don't even think that, I mean, I know we're discussing it tonight, but that student should know that we have it, we're not going to.
Well, yeah.
Gonna know, so we're not gonna, um.
We're not gonna promote it.
No, we're not gonna promote it, thank you.
Yeah, Ryan's on there from the paper.
Okay.
Katie, has there ever been a circumstance where? These symptoms were there that you would have used it?
I've been here for ten years and no.
Okay.
Good question.
So, okay, I just wanted to ask, how are we gonna handle this then? Cause we're not gonna vote to approve it tonight. And, and how do we, how do we?
Just table to the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion every table, second.
And I can put together any more information that you need, if you have questions or.
How long do you wanna table it?
Uh, how long would it take, uh, as far as I'm concerned, I'm certainly with the liability. Oh, by the next meeting, would you have that information?
Yeah, we can have some more information.
Yeah.
And that would, that would suit my. Insurance right now, I'll put you, Tom.
So why don't I send you all an email? And ask you after you've had time to read the documents and think about this, what questions you may still have. That Katie, um, or I can look into finding answers for and have the, um, that provided to you. To maybe bring some more clarity.
Yeah, cause I think we really need to.
And we've already done.
We, we need to bring this out.
Yeah.
By the next meeting, I mean, would it, it, that's gonna be jumbled.
Yeah, I think.
Shut down. And for you to get everything in order. For the school, to start the next school year.
Yeah.
So does that make sense? After we get a chance to think about it, read it, I'll send you an email.
Yeah. It wasn't gonna start this till next year anyway, by, by taking another three or four weeks. Right, Tom can be, I, I, I get Russell's opinion on medical things.
And it, it's not that I, you know, favor this.
Oh, yeah, no, I.
And Katie, I am too.
Yeah, and it's taken me a few months to really do all the research and. Yeah, to get on board with this, so.
Thank you for your hard work.
Okay, alright.
Appreciate it. Yeah, uh. I gotta move in in a second, that we table this until. The June meeting. Uh, any more discussion on that? If not, all in favor of tableing it? Five all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you, everyone.
Motion on the regular meeting for July? See if the board. Wait, Tom. You see if the board will approve the change on the regular meeting on July fourth. Why don't they wanna have it on July fourth? I figured we'd have nice fireworks on. We're gonna have a parade.
Tom, if you're in the park, we have lots of more time.
Yeah. It's July eighteen, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
You gotta move in a second, is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor? Five all. Policies.
Motion to approve the adoption of the following new policies. CB dash R Superintendent of Schools. DHCA Student Handbooks. JFABD dash R Education of Homeless Students.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I can make a motion to approve the ado- adoption of the following revised policies. CB School Superintendent, CBI Evaluation of Superintendent, CAK Development of Administrative Procedures. CHD Administrative, Administration in the Absence of Policy. JEA Compulsory Attendance, JFABD Education of Homeless Students, JFC Student Retrial from School.
Second. Any discussion on those policies? Were there any major changes to any of these policies?
No, no. Thank you.
The revisions ones wasn't the other, well, first we, we already built it on, they were.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Sir. Oh, sorry, I, I could think, no. Any discussion on those, other than, I'm talking about cases? Seeing none, all in favor? Five all. Reports.
So tonight, there, um, I told the admin team that they did not need to be present here tonight. Um, they have come faithfully and diligently all year long, each of these meetings. And we've had extra evening meetings and then there's, um, still more to come. So, um, here, they did faithfully turn these into you, and if you take the time to read them, you'll see that. There is a lot going on and there's, um, I thought it was really fun to see both at Ran and at the Stern. Um, in the year events, there's a lot of really fun and exciting things going on, um, at both schools. And a lot of, um, things to celebrate. At our, um, so, so there's that, her, at our district, um, admin meeting today. So I'll just add kind of onto this. I started with the question of what's gone well this year. And I, I thought the answers were solid, um, they were increased communication. Um, increased cooperation, um, more knowledge about what's going on across, um, different. Groups within our, our system, so not only are they giving reports and they can read what each other's organization is doing. But we're having the district admin meetings and they're talking about them, so we're celebrating more with our coworkers as they're, um. Sharing the things that are exciting to them. So we decided today with a, with a vote, unanimous vote, that we will continue our district admin meetings on the same day as our board meeting. Plus every other Tuesday, at eight o'clock on Tuesday morning, because it's before everybody really gets started. Um, because they like the increased communication and collaboration. Um, so just on their behalf, I wanna say I'm thrilled with these admin, um, meetings and with these reports. Um, I think we've done a really great job.
We will continue, uh, I know this tonight's been. We just had a lot of business, don't you?
Yes.
But in the future, they'll, they'll, they'll continue to come and do their, do their presentation.
Because they were.
No, I, that's good, no, I just.
Yeah.
No, I, that's good, no, I just, I just, I've, I've enjoyed it, you know, new members to have them come and explain what they were doing, tell them the good things. And to me, that's always good.
Yeah.
Communication.
Isn't it wonderful that we feel that way, like we met them tonight, we're.
You got anything else?
I have a couple things.
All right, on. Mia Sharat's report.
Yeah.
I'm glad to see that, uh. We're gonna continue the summer lunch program. But, you know, I just want to make everybody aware that's not just the school system doing that, that is, uh.
Transition.
High Tower Regional. Transition team. What's the real name of that?
Well, it's pronounced Scott Transition.
And, and the Recreation Department. And there's a lot involved in that, and I'm just thrilled that we're, that, that is continued because. We all know that there are, there are students or children in this community, they don't need all that program.
Hello, thank you, I was also told Tom, the library this summer, cause they have a lot of activities for the kids, I believe they're. Cause I, that's like.
And they were, I believe they were last year. And. I've heard nothing but great reviews about the. New. Menus at school.
Yes.
Good.
Oh, very impressive. A couple of kids are. You know, we have Philly subs now and we can get fried chicken.
Oh, don't go there.
You've done it, right, but they love them.
And the Jolene's. We are still, but we are still actively looking for. Especially a teacher at this school as well, right? Or have we been able to think we don't?
We, for this full year, the last five or six weeks left, we're really not, we've adjusted everything and are covering all of our services.
But do we think we're gonna have to have that position next year?
Yes, uh, we, we will because we have some, we have enough. Change between the granite school kiddos and the, um, middle school kids here. That we're gonna have to, plus don't forget that we actually eliminated one position over to Granite.
Right.
And that's partially because we have a bubble coming up, so we'll need that teacher over here.
But we'll, we'll, will we be putting one over Granite next year?
We will, we, we have advertised and we have one interested candidate in, um, the life skills, um, little people teacher over there.
I called it granted, I say.
It's the littlest children, um, it's kind of like a life skill behavior program.
Okay, cause I had a call on that thing, we, are we still advertising those?
Uh, yeah, we actually went through the list today, we've got OTPT. We got the middle school, um, BLA teacher.
Okay.
Um, out there and then the specialist teacher.
There's a gentleman that called me today, asking me about that, and I said, I think it's still open, I don't think it's done.
I think we have a gentleman call us, cause let's be looking.
Yeah, I wanted to thank. Shelley and Mia, they're gonna host, uh, a youth, one of my customers, for a work experience and they'll be working during the. Yeah, summer lunch program, so, uh, just putting them to work twenty hours a week and. It'd be good. She went through, they both, I think Mia and her both went through that culinary boot camp.
That's got nothing but high reviews and this, and the school got really high reviews. And the area.
Anything else before we move on?
So I, thank you.
Budget reset.
So just to, to back up a little bit, when we, um, voted, um, at our last board meeting for the budget. Um, in, we, that Tuesday and then in the Thursday where we met at the, on town council. We did some, um, calculations, just looking through, making sure the numbers, um, were proper. And I did discover a couple of discrepancies, so we went through the entire doc, um, document. So what I'm asking you to do today is to re-vote on this budget, which is actually less. Than the budget you voted on. A month ago, there's nothing different, it hasn't changed, the category is the same, the lines are the same. The differences, we caught a couple of math errors.
Do you remember what the first percentage was, uh? Okay, thank you.
Exactly, exactly, and it was just that.
Any questions?
Do you want to scratch in here or do you wanna do it under the? Make a motion.
Well, it's. Do what we do, we'll have to make motions, right, okay.
Make a motion to adopt revised two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school budget as presented.
There you go, a motion in a second, discussion?
I have, I have already, uh, talked to Dr. Lee about this. But I just wanna bring it up. In public, in a public setting, at the last. Council meeting, where she presented the budget. We were asked by one of the council members. To. Check the budget. It asked, yeah, the gentleman asked for three percent. I said, just talked to Shelley about that and asked her if she reviewed the budget. He has reviewed the budget. Thought that. We wanna know what cuts we could make, not, and, and. Actually be able to provide. What we, what we want to provide for education. One of the other things that, that I wanna make publicly aware, because there's a lot of talk around about it. And I'd like to have Shelley explain it out to us and, and to the public that, that are on Zoom and in person. Uh. What do we actually have, we're, we're, we're going to carry forward. Five hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Into the budget. That's gonna be our carry forward. What do we actually have in available funds? Before we take that five hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Or what do we have for remaining balance?
Yep, that's a great question, and we did discuss that when we were at the, doing the council presentation, cause they, they asked a question. So HRH, the audit firm, um. Gave us the final document in print saying that we had six hundred and eleven thousand dollars as our, um, carry fund. For our, our forward balance, so we're, like you said, using the five hundred and fifteen, um, to offset, um, taxes for this year. Um, leaving ninety something-ish for us to have for an emergency balance. But also, um, because we do have some structural things that we need to do, like in a capital improvement program. Um, our roof at Stern's, the pitch roof is actually, has a lot of leaks, um, and so it's got, we've got some rot there. We're told maybe one or two years before that's a loss, we also have, um, some siding at Granite. Which has also, um, significant water damage. And over to Granite, we also have a roof area, which we believe we're gonna be able to fix part of the pitch, it's kind of like a pitch that goes down. And there'll be a little bit of a drain put there.
They're gonna lower some of the drains on the roof too, because.
Right.
It's, it's, it's tremendously.
Right.
With the right conditions.
Well, it, it, yeah, and I, and, and that's just. We need to do that, that's, that, you know, that's getting into playing big like. On our side, in many instances, that's going like that, we haven't done it, really need, that needs to be done.
And, and so, so far, walking into the system, there isn't a capital improvement plan. So we've been putting together, having regular meeting, um, maintenance and grants meetings. And so we worked on a capital improvement plan, but. We're using the audit number of the six eleven, offsetting our taxes for our taxpayers. It leaves that little bit of a cushion, but we're not going right out and spending it, you know, we're, we're, I'm also seeking, um, some funds from, um, the Department of Ed. To see if we can, um, add to that. Um, so that we can do the project that we really need to do, but yes, that's the number six eleven and we're gonna use the five fifty.
So that tells us that this ninety-seven-ish in, in the.
Yes.
Right now, that. Well, I want to make that perfectly clear, that's what's left right now, and if we use some of that for. Right? That means we won't have. The number that we have this year and be able to put into next year's budget, but we also gotta remember that. Whatever we have. The budget to end, that's gonna end in June. That will also come again, we don't have any idea what. That's a weak year thing. Any idea what that amount's gonna be, I mean, I would, I mean, we. The last I knew, we were comfortable that we would have a. We would have somewhat because of some things that have happened, but. And we're, we're still, we're still leaning that way.
We are.
But of course, that's not a, I mean.
Yeah.
Anything can happen and.
Well, I think one time we talked at the meeting. Was the border, uh, bond is almost paid off.
Must be pretty.
And then, uh, I think it's just one more year, right?
I think it is one year, right.
Uh, so then, looking if, if we do need a roof or something like a huge thing.
Yeah.
Has gone on, get a, a bond again or something like that, so.
Is that the only bond that we have left is the blow bond?
Yes.
Our own is paid off.
Yeah.
Yeah, in pretty good shape.
We've had that wood ball that we wanted.
And I think we still have the, uh, parking lot's supposed to be done.
Uh, we're doing a lot at Stern's and we're doing, uh, doing quite a bit of granite, but there's still a lot more to be done, but there's only so much money. And, uh, the parking lot here at Stern's, especially out back, it's gotta be, uh. It's gotta be torn right up, cause.
It's got, yeah, but that's, but, but.
That's not even money we're spending.
Well, it's tax pay money, so we're paying.
Well, yes, it's our taxpayer money, but it's not money that's budgeted by.
Yes, that's right.
And, and that's another thing that. And, you know, and we've been saying that, but. You know, this, this, this train is going to end.
Yeah.
So we need to do what we can, you know, to keep our facilities, I mean.
That's one thing we can be proud about, they hold state competitions at Stern's High School.
Stern's High School is, is, is a showpiece, but we have, we know we have issues, we know we have places that. You know, I mean, but I mean. I didn't, this, this roof here, I knew we were having, I didn't realize it was. As bad, but the one at Granite.
Yeah, that's, I, I.
We, we really want, you know.
I went over to Granite and, and I worked there and I should have been more aware of that kindergarten wing, I went over there this year and I took, I, I took pitches. Cause I was just. When I came back and I showed it to Shelley and Louis had already taken pitches, so I wasn't showing him anything new. And it's just, and he. Feels that. With what he's got planned this summer, that it will address the issue for a few years and, and it's gotta, because. Yeah.
No, I just. Thank you, I just wanted to, you know. What, that we're on the same page and, you know. That, uh. You know, yeah, we're, we're, you know, we have some money in. Available, but. Really, the five hundred and fifteen is gonna take her. Thank you.
Any other discussion on?
Can these numbers here or what was presented to the town council? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And that's what we'll go to the council on Thursday again, so they have occasion.
Yes.
Anything else? Seeing none, all in favor of the revised budget as is? Five oh. Upcoming meetings are June sixth. And July fourth was canceled and set to July eighteenth. Have a motion to adjourn. I think that was the most. Any discussion on being adjourned? All in favor? Oh, five. Five oh, round six eleven.